The Pine Bluff City Council meeting for November the 3rd, 2014 is hereby called to order.
May we have roll call, please?
I'm Alderman Brummett.
Here.
I'm Eastman.
Present.
I'm Stamps.
Here.
I'm Woman Walker.
Present.
I'm Boyd.
Here.
I'm Brown.
Here.
I'm Mays.
Here.
Thank you. Each of you have a copy of the minutes from... Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion, and it's been second, that the minutes for October the 20th be approved. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to committee reports, we'll start with Ways and Means. Alderman Brummett?
Yes, Mayor. The Ways and Means Committee met prior to the meeting, and there are four budget adjustments. They were all recommended as unanimous do pass by the committee. The first one is budget funds from the Land and Water Conservation Grant through Arkansas Outdoor Recreation Grants Program to assist with funding of the Splash Park and Townsend Park projects. The amount for the Townsend Park Ball Field is $88,030.284, and to complete the Splash Park is $136,884.66. I move to accept these budget adjustments.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment, the amount of $136,884, that's coming from Land and Water Conservation... No, no, I'm wrong. Pardon me?
Yes.
No, it's a total, isn't it? Yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. It was the wrong line. $136,884.66 coming from Land and Water Conservation Grant. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a request from the Police Department to fund expenses through year end, including expenses of relocating personnel during the Joe Thomas renovation and winterizing the chiller at the Armory. The total amount is $100,000, and you see the list of the various projects to be funded to complete the program, and it comes from within the department. I move to accept this budget adjustment from the Police Department.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment, the amount of $100,000
from the Police Department be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a request from the Fire Department. Fund expenses through year end within the budget of the Fire Department. And you see the list there, and again, it's coming from adjustments within the department. I move to accept this budget adjustment from the Fire Department.
It's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment within the Fire Department to fund expenses through year end be approved. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have a request to complete the construction of the restrooms at the MLK and Regional Parks. The total amount is $70,956.50 that is needed, and the request is for this to come from the 5.8 cent tax project reserves. I move to accept this budget adjustment request.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that a budget adjustment, the amount of $70,956.50 be approved. Floor is now open for discussion.
This part of the money that's already been set aside for that project, is it...
This is additional money. Would you like for Mr. Matthews to come up and explain this to us?
Yes, yes, sir, I would.
Mr. Matthews, would you mind, please?
Yes and no, Governor. The money that was set aside for the project was not enough to cover the contracts and additional work that was done at... These are cost overruns with regards to the project. There was only $120,000 that was set up, if I'm not mistaken. Yes. And the lowest bid came in, it was right at $140, or $137, and then there was some additional work that we had to do out from wastewater. I had to come out and run about 400, nearly a feet of sewer to the site, and there was also some additional work done at the Regional Park with regards to some water services that needed to have been done. And I think the overall park budget, when it was set up, was not enough to complete all the park projects. That's why this additional money is needed.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Matthews?
This is just for the restrooms.
Yes, the restrooms are complete, they have been completed. We had some issues with the contractor, he had to get some paperwork in, else this project would have closed out a while back. But the architect worked it out, he got all the additional warranties and paperwork that is required. So we're ready to close it out. This will close that project out.
Okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. Appreciate you. All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Move that we pay the bills that the city owes?
Second.
Okay, it's been properly moved and second that the bills for the city be paid. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Ordinances and Resolutions, Alderman Brummett?
Yes, Mayor. The Ordinances and Resolutions Committee met prior to the meeting. Items 1, 2, and 3 will be read for the third time. Item 4 will be read for the first reading. Items 5 and 6 will be completed, and 7, 8, and 9 are resolutions and they will be completed. That completes the report.
Thank you, sir. Economic and Community Development, Alder Woman Walker?
No report, ma'am.
Thank you. Public Health and Welfare, Alderman Hokum?
Mayor, the Public Health and Welfare had a joint meeting today with Public Safety. We discussed two buildings downtown between 4th and 5th on South Main, that being the Band Museum, 423, and the VFW, VFW building, 417 building, and the concerns that those buildings may be on the verge of collapsing. We contacted those owners, and they're in the process of getting ready to take the proper necessary means in taking care of bringing those buildings down. It's not... It's going to be a delicate situation. One of those buildings is connected to Simmons Bank, which happens to be the old Khan's Building, and they're going to have to contact Energy before they can take the necessary precautions in taking that building down. And then they're going to contact the Inspection Department, and then the Inspection Department will get back to Public Health and Welfare, and we will notify you then on that update of that progress. That concludes my report on Public Health and Welfare, but I also want to update something, a good positive note on the community behalf. I've been working with Ms. April Layer, am I saying that right? Parks and Rec Director and Brother Larry Matthews, we're building a new baseball field at Townsend Park, and with those old bleachers that they have out there, we were able to donate those bleachers to the Continental Football League that plays at Southeast. They're going to use those bleachers next season. Those parents and children have to stand up and watch the kids play, so next season they'll have those bleachers at Southeast next year for the football league.
That's wonderful. That's good. Good, good, good.
I want to thank Brother Matthews and Ms. Layer for their help in that progress.
Okay.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. Good information. Public Works, Alder Mays?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you, and Council. We had took a... I'm on the Facility Design Committee for the multipurpose center and the aquatic pool. We took some... We took a trip, the committee, and this is with Public Works. I want Mr. Dave Sadler of the Nelson Architect Group to come up and give an overview of what we've seen so far. I was very excited about what I seen personally, and I kind of got a vision of what we need here, you know? And just a matter of time, just a matter of time. Mr. Sadler?
If it's permissible, I'd like to hand up a copy of my notes. You can follow along.
Yes, sir.
I guess if you forgive me, I've got two typos on the notes, I apologize. If you find them, you get the prize, but anyway, I'll try to give the report without the typos.
I got it, I got it.
Well, number one, the committee asked me to give you a report because they felt, number one, it was very important to keep City Council informed of what's going on in the committee meetings, and they wanted me to be sure that you knew that everyone's invited to the committee meetings. And I'll... My closing note here is to let you know the next committee meeting is this Wednesday at 10:00 a.m. in the Mayor's Conference Room, and we'd love to have you there. But I was excited about this project before we really started meeting, but now that we've started meeting and been to a few of these other facilities, I am really excited. I think the committee's been getting... Catched the vision of what this kind of facility can bring to our community and what, you know, influence on our young people and having these facilities available to our older persons as well and families. It's really going to be an invaluable quality of life improvement, I think, to our communities. So we're excited about it. The Facilities Design Committee has begun meeting, we've had three meetings, and I'd like to tell you who's on the committee, so that you know this is in there on your paper, but Annette Dove, Ms. Irene Hokum, Evelyn Horton, April Layer, Stephen Mays, Larry Matthews, Shirley Washington, and Steve Miller providing financial guidance to us as well. The committee has established some subcommittees, because we know there's several areas of study that need focused attention for the facility. One is programming and operations, that's after the building's built, obviously. One is the Facility Committee itself, and one is additional fundraising that might be desired to accomplish the overall goals. And those committees will be meeting very soon. The overall committee's begun researching and gathering information, and one of the first things they decided to do was to tour some similar facilities in cities that are close by, to see how other cities are handling this type of facility, how they're operating, how they're funding the operation. And they went to Little Rock, the Daily Center in Little Rock, they went to the fairly new center in Bryant, and also a couple of older facilities, one in Jacksonville and Cabot. And I think as a group, the committee, me and myself included, have learned a lot about how these facilities operate, some things to do and not to do. They've made some mistakes at some of these facilities, and we're getting the benefit of their knowledge having been down this road before, so that's going to be valuable. The group was asked to speak to representatives at each site, and we got to speak to them. They're going to give us copies of their operating budgets, so that the committee can see how they operate their facilities, what it costs to operate the various components of each facility. We got to ask a lot of questions, very helpful. We received, as I said, to-dos and not-to-dos, we received a number of recommendations on what to do and not to do, especially if you do aquatics facilities, there was a lot of input on the air conditioning and humidity control, which is a big, obviously, issue when you're dealing with aquatics facilities. So that was very informative. As to the budget, the committee's receiving operating budgets, as I said, they're acutely aware that this facility must be built and designed to meet a budget that you're planning for, and that you cannot overbuild or will have a budget problem. It's got to be able to handle the operation and the long-term maintenance. And the city was wise enough to set aside part of the bond issue for operations and maintenance. I don't know that exact number, Steve, it was $300,000?
$400,000.
Four or here, roughly. And that was a very wise thing to do, so we're going to be planning the facility so it can be operated with the funds that you have set aside, so that you don't get into a buying or an operating or a maintenance side. The committee will also study other options for other sources of funds. The intent is to provide a project that will... The overall master plan for the whole dream that you have, but we know we have approximately $4 to $5 million to do a phase one, so we know we've got to get started there. But... So if additional fundraising is in order, the committee's going to try to find avenues where those can be pursued. The location, we'll comment briefly on that. When the facility programming is done, in other words, when everything is sort of lined out, and the public agrees and City Council agrees on everything that the committee has established, then the committee will do its due diligence to make sure that the currently identified site that's been identified is adequate, and will study other sites as needed. So that's where they are on site. Again, the committee wants to invite you to come and participate. We'll be giving you... They've asked me to give you periodic updates as they begin to kind of move through the process, so that you know what's going on. They'd love for you to be there. And then ultimately, there's going to be some public hearings set up to get, other than just City Council, we'll have a specific dedicated public hearing to gather information from the citizens on these facilities as well. And that will be established very soon. In this meeting Wednesday, they'll be talking... We'll be talking about schedule and getting a calendar outlined and when all these activities will be occurring. So we'd love to have you at the meetings as you're able. Any questions?
The location that is over there now, I think that wasn't that specifically identified for what we were...
I think about two years ago, I think the City Council actually approved it for this use, is my understanding.
Right.
That's correct. Yeah, the only thing that the committee wants to do is do its due diligence and make sure everything that is desired will fit, properly work on that site, and give you that information.
I thought that was done.
Well, it may have been done prior, but now the committee has started looking at it, and it's sort of like a new slate. I think the committee is sort of going back to square one and making sure that everything is working together correctly.
You know, this is no reflection on the committee, but when you put things together for a site, and some of the people that... I think Mrs. Hokum was... She was on the council when that was chosen, but if you start with one thing and then you decide, well, we're just going to change it as you go, you know, that's... You're destroying what was done in the first place.
I think the committee understands that, Ms. Walker. I think the intention is not to change a site unless it becomes, you know, very important to the project, and I think at this point, the committee's still trying to evaluate the size of the facility, what all components will be on it, and then they'll study the site and make sure it works properly for you, and then... And ultimately, the City Council will make all those decisions, obviously, so I don't think there's any intent to change the site necessarily. But it may... Kind of as a natural part of the process, they may say, you know, I think I've got another idea, and they certainly would come to you and involve City Council if that were the case.
In the meantime, you're... Are you or what is the city and your company still working with Masan? Is he still in the picture or is he not?
I think Masan's still officially the city's project manager, oversees all the bond issues.
May I say this, Dave, since you're still there? We took a tour of the sites before we took a tour of the actual multipurpose and aquatic centers. Now, I'm hands-on in the midst of this with a ground-level approach, a hands-on approach. I'm fully in agreement with the site across the street. I want you all to know that. I think that's the original plan, and I think it was a whole what we tried to do. We looked at four more sites. We looked at the land first, there's some more sites, then we went out to the different places. And I just... I personally would like you all to come to the meetings and get a hands-on approach of what direction we're going, so that we can get the best facility in southeast Arkansas that is needed here in Pine Bluff. What I've seen is that we're behind probably about 10 years, and we need something to bring us up to date and continue to build on that, and now is the time, and I really need you all the expertise to be there, if you don't mind.
Okay.
To be honest with you, again, I am very excited about the project. I really think it has so much to offer. You see in these other communities, they're offering like swim teams. The local high schools can come in and have their swim teams at those pools, and we don't really have that opportunity here for our kids to have even compete on a swim team and all the other activities. I just... It's going to be a wonderful thing for our community, so we're really excited about it.
This is phase one. How far will that take you? Will that get it up and running for the public?
Yes, sir. It would get you a phase up and running. We haven't quite worked out exactly what components would be, you know, recommended for phase one, but definitely you could get a component of it working. I think originally, some of the figures that were quoted, about $11 million or so, was for the big dream, but the $4 to $5 million would get you a workable component of the multipurpose facility going.
Any other questions for Mr. Sadler?
For the aquatic pool, some of them spent three, between three and four million on aquatic pool, which is real nice, and we have that available, and that's what we look... The options we're looking at as well. Have a nice pool here, and as a leader in the city and upon our watch, I would like to make sure that no cutback is on this, no slashing of the budgets on them. If it's already there, we're going to go ahead and continue to get what we want in the city of Pine Bluff, and we will be a base for southeast Arkansas. That is my dream and our goal as a unit.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Sadler? Thank you, sir. Very well informed. And at this time, we do have some committee members present, and I just want to say thank you for your volunteer time, because it does take a lot of time to go out and tour these sites and gather the information, and then come back with good information and good questions, so I thank you for that very much. Does that complete Public Works, Alder Mays?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Development and Planning, Alderman Boyd?
No report, ma'am, but our next scheduled meeting, normally that's on Tuesday, will be held this time on Monday due to a holiday, so it'll be November 10.
November the 10th, okay.
At 2:00 p.m.
2:00 p.m., okay. Thank you, sir.
What can you do, Alderman?
Yes, sir.
I know what can you do.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
That concludes my report.
Okay. Traffic and Aviation, Alderman Brown?
No, sir.
Thank you, sir. Administration, Alderman Steps?
Yes, Mayor. The Administration Committee met twice, I believe, was that last Wednesday, or last Tuesday or Thursday?
I think all the days above.
All the days. And the day.
Just mark them all off.
We've been dealing with the provider for an insurance for the city. I think that the first report came out last week, we had stones thrown at us and everything.
Did you say you wore a motorcycle helmet one day?
Right, I had the helmet on. So, but we came back today with the plan, and the plan was to still stay with Blue Cross Blue Shield, and the plan calls for that there be no increase on the part of the employees for the city. All of the rates and things will remain the same as they were this year for 2015, and the city, there will be a savings of about $500,000, a little over $544,000 for the city, which I think is going to help us to make sure that we can maintain the number of police and firefighters that we have in the city. And we don't want anybody to have to lose a job, so we feel like this plan that has been chosen would help us do that.
I make a motion to accept...
Go ahead, yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the payment plan of that the employees' premiums this year will be the exact same as they were. Next year will be the same as this year, and that we use Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Will that come during the ordinance time?
Well, that's... I'm just...
This is from the committee.
I was just doing that.
Yeah, that was a do-pass from the committee report, I think.
Payment plan, and that will pass.
Okay.
Alderman Hokum?
One second.
He's second, then, okay.
Okay. A motion has been made to accept the payment plan as presented during the Administrative Committee meeting, which was held today, that is the same plan that we had for 2014. So floor is now open for discussion?
It's referred to as option two in the presentation that was actually...
Yes, option two. Any... For... Yes, sir.
As you change insurance providers for those that were previously ill with their health?
Yes, sir, well, pre-existing illness.
I did hear that, so I want to make sure that we get that right, that you won't have that problem.
Yes, sir. That's law now, I believe.
Alderman Hokum, he'll answer that.
Yes, sir. Okay, yes, sir.
I asked all those questions.
Right.
Blue Cross Blue Shield, who was switched into United Way, who was also interviewed, and yes, we will be covering anybody who has a pre-existing condition starting January versus 2015. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
It's my understanding that this will have to be reviewed next year about this time as well, right, for 2016, and on and on each year. Is that what's going to happen?
Yeah, this is just a one-year...
It's a one-year contract, right? And then we would...
Yes, sir.
It always is, yes. That's why I just wanted to trigger, right?
Let me ask you this, Alderman Steps. When you said the savings of $500 and something, I don't have it in front of me, the savings for the general fund will be $300 and something, right?
Three... The general fund will be $335.
Okay.
And the overall saving will be $540.
Okay, all right. Okay.
That's a lot better than having to take $200,000, $300,000 out of the reserve that we did last year to fill the budget, so that's good.
Actually, $300 and something.
Kudo, good job, committee.
Any other questions, comments?
Yes, ma'am. So this is the four options from the same company.
Right.
So number... Option number two is...
That's the one we just talked about.
That's the one you're voting on now.
That is not four options from the same company. That is four options from our finance department as to how we are going to split it up among the employees.
That's the...
It has nothing to do with Blue Cross Blue Shield.
That's the tiers, the number of tiers.
Right.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing done, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Oh, that's the end of my report. The Administration Committee would have a meeting the... What is that?
We're meant... No. When?
Yeah, I got some other meetings I got to schedule for the Thursday before the Third Council meeting.
Third Council meeting?
I mean, for the Thursday, yeah, this.
Okay. What? I'm like, what?
No one?
The third meeting.
I didn't get that memo, sir.
The Third Council meeting. This is the 13th? The 13th, at 10 o'clock.
Okay.
No, 2 o'clock.
All right.
2 o'clock.
You're sure? You're going once, going twice?
At 2 o'clock.
Okay, 2 o'clock.
Yeah.
November 13th.
November 13th at 2 o'clock.
Okay. Does that complete your report, sir?
That completes my report.
You're sure?
No.
Okay. Public Safety, Alderman Easterly?
Yes, sir. As Alderman Hokum said, we had a joint meeting this afternoon, and on the public safety side, there was two ordinances that we dealt with. One of them was ordinance adopting the social media and networking policy for the Pine Bluff Police Department, had unanimous do pass, and also an ordinance to increase the number of lieutenants in the Pine Bluff Police Department declaring emergency, also had a unanimous do pass on it. They had... They also had brought their monthly reports on the Fire Department, numbers basically the same as last month, as far as calls. They continue having all their training hours up to 33,500, training hours for the year, and doing great work on their fire prevention numbers and getting out a lot of things for people to help people with not, you know, so they know what to do and what not to do as far as fires. We have the crime statistics report for the month ending October. We have two areas that's up. Murders are up for the year by five, because we had a rash in the last couple of months. Hopefully that we will not have, at the end of the year, the rush that we had last year. We had six in the last two months of the year last year, and hopefully that will not take place this year. And where we, the murders actually by the end of the year will be about the same. Robbery are up twenty-one for the whole year, but everything else, excuse me. Uh, you've got rape, an attempted rape, down nine, compared this time last year. Aggravated assaults down twenty-seven, simple assault down a hundred and sixty-six. Commercial burglaries down thirty-one, residential burglaries down twenty-six. Theft down six hundred and three from this time last year. Motor vehicle thefts down twenty-five from this time last year. For a total of eight hundred and sixty-one less total crimes in the first ten months of this year as compared with last year, which is a sixteen and a half percent reduction. And I'd like to thank both our public safety departments for the great work they do, and that concludes my report, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Moving on to proposed ordinances and resolutions, Alderman Brummett?
Yes, Mayor, we have an ordinance amending Article One of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding identification of city vehicles, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending Article One of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding identification of city vehicles.
Move for adoption.
Excellent.
It's been properly moved and seconded that an ordinance amending Article One of Chapter Two of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, regarding identification of city vehicles. Floor is now open up, open for discussion?
Mayor, the purpose of this was to identify, uh, the city's vehicles, and of course, this does not, uh, cover, uh, public safety, uh, but it does all the other vehicles that the city owns, uh, because that way it is easier to, uh, you keep up with and, and identify. I think, uh, other cities are going to that as well, uh, because they discussed the law and think about the county. So, all the city vehicles will have, um, a decal on them that is not removable.
Okay. Any other comments? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have an ordinance adopting a social media and networking policy for the Pine Bluff Police Department, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance adopting a social media and networking policy for the Pine Bluff Police Department.
Move for adoption.
Okay.
It's been moved and properly seconded that an ordinance adopting a social media and networking policy for the Pine Bluff Police Department, floor is now open for discussion? Do we have any comments?
Uh, number, number three is going to be, uh, to Chief Hugh Banks. Uh, you can answer from where you are.
Chief Hugh Banks, would you come up to the, for me, please?
Uh, number three in Section B, but you go line ahead. And, uh, now it says employees making posts on social media shall be respectful of all members of the county. You, 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 administrator, supervisor, and co-workers, this is who takes, uh, the elected officials in the city of Pine Bluff as well, as other law enforcement officials. Uh, why would they be, uh, making, uh, posts about the administrators as well as city officials?
I don't know, I mean, I can't predict the future, but, um, I know that, uh, um, if you don't have it in a policy and it occurs, you can't, it's, it's more difficult to go retroactive with a measure, uh, let the policy be somewhat over, let it over-explain itself, I guess, most policies do so. Cover more bases than perhaps necessary.
But, you know, to me, uh, that, that would open the door, uh, it's not just about the elected officials, but for, uh, the administrators and supervisors as well, uh, that they should know that they don't post anything about their supervisor.
But the policy specifies that they don't post negative comments or critical comments on social media.
Uh, let me see, I think it said, uh, making posts on social media shall be respectful. So in other words, they can, uh, you know, post it and be respectful. So they may say, um, you know, sir, sir chief, so say, I was respectful in doing that. And they're going to say what they want to say.
Which, if they, you know, they can say what they want to about me, they might be complimenting you for being a, uh, a, a, a good steward of the city. You know, it could be completely positive, is my point.
Well, we, uh, what, I, I, as a person of, you're talking about respectable, but why, uh, do they post anything there?
I'm not, I mean, nothing comes to mind.
Well, I just, I just wondered why they would be allowed to, uh, talk about their supervisors on social media.
Well, you can't prevent someone, I mean, their, First Amendment right does extend to a certain degree, but the policy would specify that if they have something to say, at least be adult and respectable about it. And, uh, when I reviewed this policy, when I got to that part, what I was thinking back to was an occasion when Chief Moses was roundly criticized, and it was, uh, somewhat anonymously. Uh, but there was, there was a, and this is pre-Facebook, it didn't exist at that time. Uh, but there, somebody established a website and was, and took, took some cheap shots. Uh, and whether that, whether the criticisms were accurate or not, it was the way they, they were presented that were, that were objectionable, and, and the words chosen. There's a way to disagree with somebody, uh, without being rude, perhaps? And that's, and that's what I would like to see the policy accomplish, is to remind people to, uh, you know, leave the childish and churlish and rude comments to the side, and, and, you know, if they've got something to speak to, let it be a, uh, let it be a legitimate criticism, and then be done.
I was just curious, because, you know, I would, you know, that's just my thinking, that, you know, if, if they had some, you know, thing that they disagreed with, normally that they go to the supervisor and ask, can I speak to you, and they speak to it about it, instead of doing it on social media?
Well, and, and, and the, and the, uh, the overall umbrella, if you will, on that, is that they're not connecting themselves to the Pine Bluff Police Department or the city in any way if they do make a respectful posting of some kind. So, with that in mind, they would have to be really careful how they chose their words to avoid contributing the policy. I wouldn't, I wouldn't expect a criticism over somebody made me work late, or I don't like this policy. You know, we do have avenues for that.
Any other questions for Chief? Thank you, sir. All right, any other questions concerning this ordinance? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, we have an ordinance amending Article One of Chapter Sixteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to add a Section sixteen dash five mandating use of a container or dumpster to dispose of solid waste, declaring an emergency up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance amending Article One of Chapter Sixteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to add a Section sixteen dash five mandating use of a container or dumpster to dispose of solid waste, declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption.
It's been properly moved and seconded that an ordinance amending Article One of Chapter Sixteen of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to add a Section sixteen dash five mandating use of a container or dumpster to dispose of solid waste and declaring an emergency. Floor is now open for discussion. Yes, sir?
Thank you. Questions together? The first thing I want to like to know is, have we identified some businesses that we have this problem with? The next thing I would like to know is, what would these dumpsters cost? The, uh, the businesses? And then that's a very strong thing that I want to discuss, and that was, I would not like for this particular ordinance to become a political ordinance. It could possibly become very political. It would not very helpful, because, and, and I understand that it explains something, what is considered. But the most important thing, and I'd like for someone to answer it, uh, the most important thing is, where are the businesses that we can identify and need to dump? Well, we have such an ordinance, that could ultimately mean any business that has a business, per se. And if it's on the book as an ordinance, then it's possible that you go to the inspector's and say, hey, that gives me a dumpster. And according to the passing of this ordinance, if such passes, then that business in violation if they don't get a dumpster. And I really seriously would like the clarification between a regular business and a business that has to have such a problem. Because if we had that problem, we would need to pass this one, we could just have inspectors go out and say, hey, they got problems over there, and they need to help, that's, that's, I'm a health issue. So I wouldn't think that we have to pass one, because health is already, you know, important to the county. So, I, I may have to speak again, 'cause I don't know if you can give me the answer to the question.
I can just change this.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna let the girl go, come here.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alderman Holcomb?
Now, this ordinance does not affect those businesses who already have dumpsters, who already have trash cans, who already put their trash in trash cans and dumpsters. This ordinance affects those businesses. We have certain businesses who literally dump their trash on the ground, as tall as this ceiling, as wide as this room. This is who this ordinance is affecting. If you are a place of business, take, for, for instance, being this, you all have a trash can. This does not mean you have to go buy a dumpster. You already putting your trash in a trash can, that, this does not mean you have to go buy a dumpster. Take for instance, Henson Holcomb, we already have a trash can. My daddy has asked me about this. We doesn't, we do not have to go buy a dumpster. These are people who are literally putting their trash on the ground. This, this is who this ordinance is affecting. So if you, if you're already in compliance with putting your trash in the trash can or dumpster, this does not affect you. But if the city, city inspector comes by and you, you have trash on the ground, this ordinance will affect you. Am I correct?
Yes, sir.
All right.
One hundred percent correct. Alderman Brummett?
All I was gonna point out was on line eighteen, it says, must be disposed of in approved containers or dumpsters. It does not say they've gotta have a dumpster, any, any shape, form, or fashion.
Exactly. And we have, we have run across those with our safety sweeps, where, as like Alderman Holcomb said, they're either using the back of their property to dump garbage, or they're taking their garbage over to somebody else's container and using that container to avoid having to have a dumpster or a, an approved container. So it, there's two different things here that we'll be solving with this. Alderman Brown?
Could we just identify those businesses with inspectors, since we have a strong inspection department? Could we just identify those businesses without doing this? Because, uh, according to what I'm thinking, this will put on the book, and it becomes very political to those people that you might think they need a dumpster. And because they have no way to fight it, and it's a law, and they're trying it. We could be, anyway, when you're a medical, we could actually have, I'm, I'm not gonna say that it could happen, but you could have people that target businesses and say, they need one. And it gets to the point where you'll have to force the back of their, have it. But that's, that's, I'm saying that if, that the county has an ordinance, and the city has one, you can't dump on your own property. So, you certainly can't dump on a business property, if you identify those people that are dumping on their own property. That's a simple matter. You get the main one and a ticket, or have a company, you see it, see it all, or some. I'm just having a problem with it, but, you know, I, I don't wanna carry it in a, but, I'm just thinking of, I'm gonna do it this time here, that have said that to me, because initially, I read it and I didn't read it. And this is what they said to me, they said, now they're gonna pass an order to make everybody with a business get a dumpster. Well, that was the, that was the perception initially that this ordinance carries. And then I had to reread it myself and see where that could be construed as to say, they could be right. So, we wanna be business-friendly, and we don't wanna run anybody out, and we definitely don't wanna make people in Pine Bluff upset with us, because we need every business that Pine Bluff can afford, that we can have. So, those are the kind of things I think that we need to look into. I, I just think we need to deal with those businesses, and I don't think we need to do an ordinance. That, that ordinance may be strong, very strong, and it may be these things enforced to businesses that they normally were the best. That's all I'm saying now. I'm thinking in terms of businesses. And then, and then I wanna say this also. Our last meeting, we was trying to carry it from, from first reading to the third reading. And somehow we did read the second reading, and now we have it on the third reading. I think something, it, it's important, needs to go through the final readings, because you could act, because really and truly, the press have not given the people enough information about what's going on with this, half the people really don't know. The press makes a small notation of it, but it has not been explained in detail. So a lot of people really don't know what this is all about. Only I think that this table knows a lot about it, so the city is kind of, they're nimble about it. Well, not, not necessarily, but they just don't know. So I think, instead of moving it from, the last time we moved it from the first to the second, I thought it was gonna go right to the first reading, but instead it came to the third reading, which, which, I don't think the people, the public is, is notified enough for us to pass this tonight, that, of course, they just voted for that now. I mean, we wanna do it right. We wanna do it right. We wanna make sure our businesses, we wanna make sure the businesses clean up their garbage, and wanna make sure that we impose a law that will, you know, that won't violate it.
Okay. Alderman Walker?
Um, I have a question for the city attorney. Um, and I want to know, do we have, and not have something on the books that would cover, uh, people? I know we have littering, you know, ordinance and so forth. Don't we already have something on the books that would cover, uh, people, you know, putting the trash on the ground? And, and if we, if somebody has a business and, you know, and they are dumping it on the ground, you know, do we have an ordinance, is something that covers that, a law? Uh, or if the dumpster is overloaded and, you know, they put things in there like furniture and that type of thing, you know, in these apartment complexes, you know, it can, do we have a law that they can be contacted? You know, that they are breaking this particular law?
I don't know that we have an ordinance that addresses this particular issue. Mr. Choudhury, you know of one? I don't think it addresses this particular issue as it relates to the, uh, dumpsters with the businesses. I don't know that we have that. I'm not aware of it, I split that way.
Okay, any other comments?
And here, where it says individual and commercial entities, uh, well, you know, if, I think if you have water, uh, you automatically have a container, because the container cost is on the water bill. Am I correct?
Who are you addressing that to? Okay. Are you addressing it to me?
No.
Oh, okay.
And because I know it's so, that is, if you, if you have water to, uh, to a location, then you have a dumpster.
Okay. Any other comments? Yes, sir?
I just wanna make sure that this is, uh, is business-friendly for our city. Uh, I mean, you can- Uh, I mean, you can, actually, that's what code enforcement is, is for, to, to go out there and ask the people to remove the trash. And I've done that in the fourth ward a few times, where I see drink crates. I just went in there politely and asked them and they, and they took care of it. I mean, if I can do that just by walking up there and, you know, letting them know who I am in the community, that's what we pay a high dollar code enforcement and quality of life inspectors for. Man, that's just maybe just something else. And I just want to make sure it's not adding or creating another bill for our, our, our business owners. They're already, uh, a lot of them are complaining about being overtaxed, over, and we, we never get them anything back. Uh, you know, I see holes on their parking lot and we can't even go fill a hole in for them, even though they're paying six and seven, eight thousand dollars a year in, in taxes. And that's what I'm getting from a lot of our business owners right now. We're not giving them anything back. We're not giving them, we, 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 in the process of luring companies here with incentives, but we don't help the ones that are here now by filling a pothole up in front of their business. It's always, that's private property, but yet they're taxpayers. And that's what I'm getting from a lot of people in the community. And I, I think that's, we need to kind of look at this again and, and we don't want to put a burden, more of a burden on our, our business people. I signed off on this and I, I looked at it and looked at it and I've been getting calls as well. And, and it seemed to me it needed to be some more clarification on it. And, and not, not to rush out there and bombard them tomorrow morning, when you can go out there and ask them to move the trash. Now that's...
Okay. Alderman Steppes?
If we had a hundred and fifty dogs out in a pack, and you throw one rock out there, the one is going to holler at the one that get hit by the rock. We, you know, we go out there and too many times I've seen it, and you all have seen it, where these trash is piled up in a corner. If somebody was coming into your city to talk, talk about coming in there to start a business, if they saw all that trash, they going the other way. If we got something here and it clearly says that a dumpster or a container, and we know that, uh, Alderman Walker just made the statement, if you paying a water bill, you got a, a container. And those that's not going to be in compliance with this, it's not going to have no overall effect on everybody that's out there in business. Because most of the people we're talking about are already in compliance. But when we start to talking about being friendly, you go there and, and, and start telling somebody about, hey, man, will you please get your dumpster out there? You ain't finna get nothing. But if they know that you got something here, got a little teeth in it, and it has been passed by the city council. And I know we got a lot of stuff on the books, but, but, but what I'm saying here is that I don't quite understand what we talking about when we talking about being friendly. I don't understand that. It because that you are being friendly because you let them know beforehand, here's what's going to happen to you if you do this. Now that's friendly. If you didn't tell them beforehand and you went out there, that's unfriendly. But if they know beforehand that you got this ordinance out there, then I think that the people will come in compliance. I don't think we have a whole lot of people, but I've seen it too many times that we pass by and these people got their stuff stacked out there. And, and it's a problem. And I think we could eliminate that.
Okay. Alderman Boyd?
I think, ma'am, one of the things in this ordinance that is specified that we are able to mandate they have these things. Because if they don't have them, just because Stephen Mays go there and tell them to move it, that don't mean they have to move it. And anybody that got a business, got to expect they got to get rid of their trash. If it's no more than a, a one gallon trash can, if that takes care of it, that takes care of it. But if it calls for a dumpster, then it calls for a dumpster. And any business that leave because they have to get a dumpster, there's no business to start with. I mean, that just don't put no burden on no business. They ask them to have a dumpster.
I agree. Okay. Alderman Brown?
Thank you. This city has been here a long time. It didn't just, well, it was on yesterday. And we got, we got some rules on the book. People not just getting scared because you do it right now. What's going to happen with this ordinance? If it's not enforced, it'll be just the rest of this, just like this ordinance, not being enforced.
Yeah, just, yes or no, one of them.
Because they saw on the book already, the color, what we're talking about. It's an ordinance that's on the book right now. The color, all we're going to do right now is put on the book and enforce it for the people that we don't like, the people we want to push them for six months to a year. And we'll get a new set of, uh, ordinance and a new mayor, and it'll turn people down and leave. Somebody will come and say, let's put this ordinance on the book. Because our people in the bench have researched that ordinance situation right now. It's on the book just like this. I, I know it is. So all I'm saying is because...
Next one, do what they need to do.
And that was to, to a statement that was made, whether it's business friendly. Well, business friendly simply means that we don't want to anger the people that we have. We want to make Pine Bluff beautiful. But we don't want to take the businesses that are trying to make it here and aggravate them with more tactics and more, more fees and more extra things to do. Now, this is what I've been hearing, and I hate to hear it, just saying that the reason why I moved out in the country is because they got too many rules and regulations in the city. They taxing me to be up in the city. And I hate to hear that. So with our businesses that we're losing, those businesses, why are we putting more, more, more finesse on those businesses? And I, I missed that part, I don't know what business friendly means, whether it's a legal... I'm saying to us, let's identify the ones that are not doing what we think they should do and send inspectors out there with some kind of, uh, uh, citation. Just like they do my grass, who too tall, I can get it up that lawn now. But that was not my law, it doesn't need my grass. It doesn't, we, we want to anger them. So that's the same thing you do, it's my place, dump it trash. I just think if we pass this, that means legally, in everybody's mind, they can say, we need a dumpster. That's all I'm saying. And those people may get upset. And I don't know what dumpsters cost. I really don't know. But if, if, if you have found some violators that are packing up garbage without announcement, then we need to take, we need a citation of those people. You don't have to do a little, if you have the right to citation of those people right now. Call it a health issue. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, sir.
Ma'am, well, just to kind of clear what a couple of my colleagues were saying about what I was saying is, I mean, you have code enforc- enforcement can go out there and identify. And is there a warning in this here in the beginning or just? Now, don't get me wrong, I've seen some that's, that's stacked up and things all over the place. And looks, it looks terrible. Now, something needs to be done. I, I agree with that. I'm all for cleaning the city up. But is there a warning, uh, process before, you know, I think if you ask them with the, the, in code enforcement or quality of life, uh, inspectors showing a badge and, it, it's a way to be bu- uh, business friendly with people. And, and then if they don't comply, you know, we don't want to just, you know. Yeah, I, I know, I, I understand that, I understand that. But I'm just, I'm just, I'm just saying, I just, I thought about this over and over again that if we have a warning process, you know, just to, and then let them know that, hey, this is what the ordinance say. Well, I mean, you know, I, I could...
They go bear your name that you, that you sign off on it.
Well, I, I don't have a problem with that. I mean, I'm just speaking my, my, my...
To answer your question, um, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent. When you have got a code violation, the very first thing they want to do is meet with the individual, talk to them, let them be aware of the law of what code they're violating, and give them an opportunity. That's why you have to do follow-up. And then with the follow-up, if they do not come in compliance, then that's when they go to the next level. And that's been the practice since day one. And Ms. Ruth is nodding her head. Yes, that is exactly right. The problem is, is that if you do not have a law on the books, what are you, what are you enforcing?
I understand that.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, ma'am?
I have. Is this for the third and final reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Because I was going to, uh, suggest that, you know, we allow the city attorney's office to find out what we already have, uh, in the inspection department.
Okay. We have, um, any other comments? No? Let's have roll call, please.
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Eastlin?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Hoak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
The emergency clause.
Ma'am? Oh, okay. Thank you.
Emergency clause?
Okay. It's been properly moved in second that the emergency clause be, um, uh, put in, into place. Any...
I didn't say a need for emergency.
Okay. Do you have any comments?
We have to stop the emergency.
Are, are you addressing me? Are you addressing me? The floor?
It doesn't matter who you're listening to.
Okay. Okay. Any other comments? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Roll call? Okay. Roll call and emergency clause.
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Eastlin?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Hoak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay. Mayor, we have an ordinance prescribing circumstances under which city officials and employees may transact business with the city of Pine Bluff up for the first reading.
Whereas Arkansas Code Section fourteen forty-two one oh seven prohibits a municipality from contracting for the purchase of supplies, equipment, and services from city officials and employees in the absence of an ordinance prescribing the conditions for the conduct of business. And whereas it is desired to permit city officials and employees to contract with the city under certain circumstances in which the appearance of partiality or preferential, preference is eliminated. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section one. Pursuant to Arkansas Code Section fourteen forty-two one zero seven, an elected official, city officer or employee, um, may enter into a contract with the city for providing supplies, equipment, or services when the contract, uh, when the contract or, when the employee, the official, the officer, or employee in the following circumstances. Note, A, the individual, company, or entity is the lowest, most responsible bidder after sealed bids are opened in a public or after evaluation by the city department or agency soliciting the bids. Or B, the city officer or official or employee is not employed within the department or agency soliciting the bids and/or written quotes. And C, the city officer, official, or employee administering the solicitation process for the city department or agency himself has no business or familial relationship with the individual, company, or entity submitting the bid or written quote. Section two. No department head shall approve or execute a contract with an elected official, city officer or employee in any circumstance without, A, filing with the finance department a written notice of intent to do so. B, uh, the next regular meeting of the city council shall have occurred and no action taken place to prohibit the contract from being awarded to the individual, company, or entity. The finance director shall provide the city clerk with a copy of the written notice submitted by the department head for inclusion in the agenda provided to council members prior to the meeting. Section three, in no circumstance shall a city employee be awarded a contract in the absence of competitive solicitation. Section four, all ordinances or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section five, the sections, subsections, and provisions of this ordinance are declared to be severable and should any section, subsection, or provision be deemed invalid by a court of law, the remaining parts shall continue in full force and effect. Section six, this ordinance being of a general or permanent nature, publication is not required and it shall take effect upon its passage.
Has this been to committee, Alderman Holcomb? What committee should this be assigned to? Administration or...
Ways and Means.
Administration committee, would you all review this at your next meeting and make a recommendation, please? We'll place it on the calendar and the administration committee will review it at their next meeting. Okay. We have an ordinance to increase the number of lieutenants in the Pine Bluff Police Department and declaring an emergency up for the first reading.
Whereas pursuant to ordinance sixty-four ninety-four, the city count, the city of Pine Bluff created a quality of life division within the police department to be staffed by seven personnel, which includes one lieutenant. And whereas it is essential to add a lieutenant's position to the order of rank in the Pine Bluff Police Department for the purposes of supervising the quality of life division. Whereas the, the Pine Bluff Code of Ordinances, Section twenty-one twenty-six, should be amended to increase the number of lieutenants from the, for the Pine Bluff Police Department from, and it's a typographical error, from twelve lieutenants to thirteen lieutenants, instead of sixteen to seventeen. And whereas the salary for the additional position should be transferred from the balance of wages and benefits due for the position of the chief housing inspector in the inspection and zoning department. And whereas to bring stability to the quality of life division, it is imperative that Section twenty-one twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pine Bluff be amended to immediately increase the number of lieutenants in the Pine Bluff Police Department from twelve to thirteen. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section one, that Section twenty-one twenty-six of the Code of Ordinances of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas is hereby amended to change the number of authorized lieutenant positions from twelve to thirteen. Section two, the two thousand, the two thousand fourteen city budget is amended to reduce the chief housing inspector position funded in the inspection and zoning department by the pro rata portion of forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-one dollars and to transfer the pro rata portion of the wages and benefits due for the chief housing inspector position for the remainder of two thousand and fourteen from the budget and for the inspection and zoning department to the two thousand fourteen budget for the police department. The, the police department should prepare its two thousand fifteen budget, taking into account the additional lieutenant position. And the inspection and zoning department shall prepare its two thousand fifteen budget, taking into account the reduction of the chief housing inspector position. Section three, in the event, any section, subsection, subdivision, paragraph, subparaphrase, item, sentence, clause, phrase, or word of this ordinance is declared to be, or adjudged to be invalid or unconstitutional. Such declaration or adjud- adjudication shall not affect the remaining provisions of this ordinance as if such invalid or unconstitutional provision was not originally a part of this ordinance. Section four, in an effort to maintain the public peace and welfare that will be accomplished by the creation of the quality of life division within the Pine Bluff Police Department, it is imperative to make a swift transition and establish stability within the police department immediately. Therefore, an emergency is declared to exist and this ordinance shall be in effect from, from and after the pa- its state of passage.
Move, suspend the rules, place an ordinance on the second reading.
It's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules, to place this ordinance on second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, may we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Eastlin?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Hoak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance to increase the number of lieutenants in the Pine Bluff Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Move further, suspend the rules, place an ordinance on the third and final reading.
It's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules, to place this ordinance on third reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, may we have roll call, please?
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Eastlin?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Hoak?
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance to increase the number of lieutenants in the Pine Bluff Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Move for adoption.
It's been properly moved in second that an ordinance to increase the number of lieutenants in the Pine Bluff Police Department and declaring an emergency. Floor is now open for discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. May we have roll call, please? I don't think everybody voted.
Alderman Brummett?
Aye.
Alderman Eastlin?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
No.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
No.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Hoak?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Motion carries.
Move for the emergency clause?
It's been properly moved in second that the emergency clause regarding ordinance to increase the number of lieutenants in the Pine Bluff Police Department and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Roll call.
Roll call. Thank you.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Easton?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Ho.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, mayor, we have an ordinance waiving competitive busy, bidding, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage for city employees for the year two thousand and fifteen and declaring an emergency.
And I've, I've been asked to add language to Section Two to reflect Option Two as discussed in the earlier motion. Okay. Whereas Qual Choice is the current provider of health insurance coverage and administration for the city. And whereas after notification from Qual Choice of an anticipated premium increase for the year two thousand and fifteen, the city obtained information from other interested insurance providers with the purpose of comparing rates and services. And whereas based on this research, the city council finds and concludes that it is in the best interest of the city and its employees to contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arkansas to provide health insurance coverage and administration. And whereas upon, excuse me, whereas using, the use of competitive bidding or selection service for this, for this service will not result in the city obtaining a superior result and require too much time for the city to have in place a program by January first, two thousand and fifteen, rendering competitive selection impractical and inefficient. And whereas it is imperative that the city con, that the city contract with a provider and have in place a program to commence on open enrollment, on an open enrollment program beginning November third, two thousand and fourteen, and concluding on November the thirtieth, two thousand and fourteen. Now therefore, be it ordained by the city council of the city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, that the council finds that requiring competitive bidding or selection for providing health insurance coverage and administration for the city, uh, would be inefficient and impractical and is therefore waived. Section Two, that the mayor is authorized and directed to contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Arkansas to provide health insurance coverage for its city employees based upon the quotes, terms, conditions, and specified considerations set forth in the documents submitted by the provider, which shall be memorialized in a written contract, which shall reflect Option Two in the attached two thousand and fifteen health insurance funding options. It is further agreed that as part of the consideration for the agreement, Blue Cross Blue Shield will make available a sufficient number of representatives to assist the city's human resources department in the transition from the former provider to Blue Cross. Section Three, all ordinances, resolutions, bylaws, or parts thereof which conflict with this ordinance are repealed to the extent of the conflict. Section Four, the sections and sentences of this ordinance are declared to be severable, and in, in the event any section or sentence is declared to be invalid by a court, then the remaining parts thereof shall not be affected and shall continue to be given effect as if the invalid provision was not originally included. Section Five, that an orderly... What's that? Okay. That an orderly transition to the new carrier requires an adequate open enrollment period commence, to commence immediately so as to ensure uninterrupted coverage for employees beginning January one, two thousand and fifteen. Continued coverage being essential to the public health, safety, and welfare, an emergency is declared to exist, and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon its passage.
Move suspend the rules, place a ordinance on the second reading.
It's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules and place this ordinance waiving competitive bidding, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage for city employees for the year two thousand and fifteen and declaring an emergency. Any discussion? May we have roll call, please? No, we can just... I got myself confused. Roll call. That's what I thought.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Easton?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?
Aye.
Alderman Walker?
Aye.
Alderman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Mays?
Aye.
Alderman Ho.
Aye.
Motion carries.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage for city employees for the year two thousand and fifteen and declaring an emergency.
Move further, suspend the rules, place a ordinance on the third and final reading.
It's been properly moved in second to suspend the rules and place ordinance waiving a competitive bidding, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage for the city employees for the year two thousand and fifteen and declaring an emergency. Floor is now open for discussion.
I have one.
Yes, sir. Alderman Brown.
I, I'll, I'll give it to you. No, the only thing I was gonna say to the HR is that it states here that we have an agreement between Blue Cross Blue Shield will make available a sufficient number of representatives to assist the city human resource department in the transition from the former provider to Blue Cross Blue Shield. I would like to make sure that we are notified in the event that they, uh, are not doing that. It had been previously stated that some other agencies and things have, have, uh, have not been provided with the type of assistance that they thought they were gonna get. So that's gonna be very important, that we are notified in the event that we have a liking that.
Okay, any other comments? Yes, sir?
My own, my own statement was, maybe I read out the question as she read, I thought that was the, uh, signing period. What was that, what was the call there?
Enrollment.
Enrollment.
I just need, you just need to know when it is.
From November third until the end of, uh...
It's on, uh, it's on, it's on, uh, line twenty-three and twenty-four.
Right.
It's on line twenty-three and twenty-four, right?
Yeah.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Um, this is for, um, Attorney Scott. Yeah, is, is this the pad that you were putting in there? Uh, the, uh, the change about the, um, the number, which one we're gonna use?
Yes, I, I read that.
She, she read it, didn't she?
She included Option Two on line number four on the second page.
Right. I added the language, which shall reflect Option Two in the attached two thousand and fifteen health insurance funding option. And I'll provide a copy of that to our city clerk if she doesn't have it.
Any other questions? Yes, sir?
Just another reminder, the, the whole purpose of me asking about the, the enrollment period is sometimes employees do not know when that happens. And they, it slips up, it, it has actually slipped on me a year or two, so... Whatever you do to inform how important that is in the enrollment period, we need to do that. Forget it slipped on me at times.
Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Hearing done, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're reading again.
Okay, sorry.
Am I reading, I'm reading again, right?
One more time.
An ordinance waiving competitive bidding, authorizing the mayor to sign a contract with Blue Cross and Blue Shield to provide health insurance coverage for city employees for the year two thousand and fifteen and declaring an emergency.
We ready for adoption?
You're adopted.
We read it three times. We've, that was our third time.
Third, the third time I read was, you passed. Now you gotta do your emergency or something.
Okay.
We, we haven't voted on the third reading. Right, so you need it.
Okay.
Alderman Brown?
Aye.
Alderman Easton?
Aye.
Alderman Steph?